In regular session at 7:00 PM on March 19th, 2019, at the Lebanon High School in the Herman B. Wells Center. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting school corporations business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated by the agenda. Visitors requesting permission to address the board on a specific agenda item should sign in before the meeting starts on the form of the board, on the board table. The board requests a discussion time limit of three minutes on any specific agenda item, and we ask that visitors to make only one appearance per item. We ask those addressing the board to speak from the podium and state their name and address. Board Policy 0167.3 dictates that personnel issues will not be addressed. Concerns about individual employees of the district should be brought to the superintendent or designated. The meeting site is fully accessible. Any persons requiring further accommodations should contact the superintendent at the school corporation's central office. The Board of Trustees respectfully request those guests and visitors in attendance be courteous and silence their cell phones. It's customary before we call the meeting to order to begin with a prayer. Mr. Bertrand.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to make it through in our day. Please be with us as we prepare stuff for our Lebanon Community School Corporation kids and parents and administrators and teachers. Please be with all those who are around the world serving, protecting us. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recall, we can show that all members are present, so we have a quorum. Mission statement, Mr. Herr.
Lebanon Community School Corporation will cultivate and reach every student by influencing and enriching their lives through the power of education and do so in a positive and safe learning environment.
Good news.
Thank you, Mr. Wari. It's my pleasure to bring to the board this evening several items of good news to share. First, I want to recognize Central Elementary. They have begun their 5,000 Books in 50 Days Challenge. That was begun last week, and their goal is to read 5,000 books in 50 days, as the title says. You can follow their progress or find ways to help by following the school website or on their Facebook page. So, we wish all of the Central students, luck and staff, on getting those 5,000 books read. So, it's exciting. At this time, we also would like to recognize Sarah Hamerly. She has been selected as the Copeland Scholarship Award winner. The scholarship covers her full tuition at DePaul University for the next four years, and that's a distinguished line of Lebanon alumni that have received that award, and Sarah will certainly represent us well. So, congratulations to her and her family. Also, it's my pleasure to report this evening that the Lebanon High School Tigerettes Winter Guard competed at a state level on Saturday where they earned a seventh-place finish out of the top 16 teams in the state, and it's an exceptional accomplishment for them. This is a relatively new organization. It's a longstanding group, but they did a fine job, and they performed at the basketball games and at different athletic events and in competitions. So, very proud of what the young ladies and gentlemen that participate in that program accomplished. It's really a great achievement. Then last, we want to congratulate the LHS percussion team from the band. They qualified for the IPA State Finals for the first time since 2015, and they will compete on March 30th at Ben Davis High School. So, we wish them the best of luck and congratulations to them for making that selection to that IPA event. So, those are the good news items that we bring for the board's recognition this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Second item on the agenda is approval of amendments for the February 19th, 2019 regular meeting. Can I get a motion?
How much a motion?
Second?
I'll second that.
Who was second, I'm sorry? Lisa, sorry. Any questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Against, same sign? Motion carries. Next agenda item, we need to certify executive session content for February 27th, March 5th, March 6th, March 7th, March 13th, and March 14th, all 2009. And that's 19, I'm sorry. And that was to receive information about interview prospective employees. And then, March 1st to discuss potential litigation. Can I get a motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Audience to visitors. Mr. Newsom.
My name is Chase Newsom, and I live at 138 Ewan Boulevard in Lebanon. And I'm here tonight to address an agenda item that's on the board's docket for later in the meeting tonight, and it's Agenda Item 17 that's in regard to submission of conflicts of interest to the board. I have a few brief comments that I want to make, and I also want to make some comments about my experience in addressing this earlier as I brought it to the board and the administration starting over two months ago to try to address this in private and had hoped to before I found that I really need to address this publicly. So, first, I am sorry to be up here today. This is not something I take any pleasure in, but it's something that I think's important and that I wanted to address and hear a response from the board and possibly the administration on why certain things are being handled in this way. So, quick background is that I did speak with a board member going all the way back to January 4th, and then I spoke with Dr. Taylor going back to the 1st of February, asking them to comply with what I saw as a violation of their conflict of interest policy that's stated in this bylaws of Lebanon School Corporation and also in Lebanon, excuse me, in Indiana State Code. To be clear, the issue that I have is that a conflict of interest exists on this board when a member of the board is profiting while serving on the entity that is making the decisions to approve contracts. The Lebanon School Corporation bylaws and Indiana State Code are extremely clear on the way that these are handled. And the reason I'm here tonight is that I've really struggled with trying to get some action and really any response over these last couple of months. So, first thing, I just wanted to state a couple of points in the bylaws. The conflicts of interest is mentioned about five different times in Lebanon bylaws. One section is 1130 under just conflict of interest, and it says, "No member of the school board shall engage in or have a financial interest in any activity that conflicts or raises reasonable question of conflict with his or her corporation responsibilities." In Section 6460, it says, "The board shall not approve a contract or purchase in which a board member profits or has a financial interest unless the board member with the financial interest makes the written disclosure on the State Board of Accounts Form 236," which I provided back in January and in February. "And this disclosure is approved by the vote of the board before the board votes on the contract or purchase." In my opinion, these are very clear, and when I brought them to the attention of the board, I expected them to be eager to comply with these and to fix them. Instead, I felt like the issue was only corrected after multiple follow-up requests on my part and finally, the board's own legal counsel having to get involved and instruct the board that they were actually out of compliance with these rules. The primary example of this, in the way it's been handled improperly, is, I think, the struggle to get the correct form. They're voting on a form tonight, 236, that shows a conflict of interest for Mr. Bertrand. I've received over the course of these last two months, three different versions of this form. The first version I received in the 1st of January stated that there was no compensation at all being received. I received another one, which all board members and administration were copied on, on March 3rd, which stated that there was compensation of $15,000. And it wasn't until a follow-up on that, and I received one four days later that stated the compensation was $41,226. So, and I have these, and I can submit those for the minutes also. So, those are my concerns, and I'm just, had expressed my frustration on having to bring it to this point and speak in public, but I do think it's important. And I have two questions that I want to ask, and I hope that they could be answered before you vote on this tonight. So, the first one is, is in regards to these forms, the Form 236 that I've received. It says, the titling on Question 7 on that form says, "Describe in what manner the public servant expects to derive a profit or financial benefit from the above contract. If it's reasonably determinable, state the approximate dollar value of such profit or benefit." So, my question is, is why did it take three times to get to this final number that we're going to vote on tonight?
We will address that when we vote on the conflict of interest.
My next question is, is how many years has it been since you've not been disclosing this conflict?
And we will address that when we vote on the conflict of interest.
That's all I have.
I've got a question for you, Chase. What, you've been here your whole life, you know? I'm just curious, why, why are you bringing this up now?
So, I've been here, I've only moved back for two years.
Okay.
So, I've only been back in the school corporation for two years. And I had a friend and a colleague that had asked me to look in to seeing if he could, you know, possibly quote the insurance for the school. And the only reason this was brought to my attention is that I couldn't find any information on it. And I looked up for the Form 236 online because he told me that, he was told that a school board member had it. So, the reason that I'm here tonight is just because I simply brought it to a board member that I trusted and said, hey, you know, this is out of compliance. I think it's wrong, you know, we need to, you guys should fix this. And it's been tooth and nail to get to the point where it's actually disclosed in the proper way.
Is this friend of yours, is he in the insurance business?
Yeah, that's, he's a friend who asked me to look into...
Why, why is he, why are you doing his work? Why, if he's in the insurance business, why, why is he not contacting the school?
He did. He contacted the school to inquire about when he can bid for this. So, he was, and he just expressed frustration, which, I gain nothing from this. So, I mean, I get absolutely nothing for this. I make no compensation. I just think that, I guess I don't understand what, you know, like you're asking me some of these questions. I'm just not certain why you wouldn't want to be in compliance and be doing things above board. So, I gain, I mean, if anything, I lose something. I have personal relationships with people that I'm, that, you know, are strained for sure with this.
Okay, yeah. I'm just curious, because you're not in the insurance business, right?
No, I'm not at all.
Okay. I'm just curious, you know, nosy, you know? Because if this friend of yours is in the insurance business, I find it interesting he's not asking these questions and he's having you do it.
I'm not doing anything for him. I could care less whether he gets the policy or whether you do business with him or not. I mean, I hope you understand that.
No, I get it, but, you know...
And he's also not, he's also not a resident of this school district. I am. And so, that's why I'm here, because I'm a concerned citizen and taxpayer in this school district.
Okay, no, that's fine, I'm just curious. So, all right. Yeah, well, we'll get to it on the Agenda Item 17.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Next person on Audience to Visitors is Tony Robbins.
Good evening, board. My name is Tony Robbins. I live at 330 South Muirfield Circle here in Lebanon. And for those of you that don't know me, I ran for the school board last fall, so I want to say congratulations to you, Lisa. Good job. The reason I'm here tonight is to let the board know on this issue of the conflict of interest that it, that it's an upsetting issue for more than just the few people that are here tonight. When I was running for school board last fall, the number-one issue that was brought to my attention by the taxpayers was the issue that they felt there was a conflict of interest with some members of the board doing business with the school corporation. Now, they brought up both current board members and past board members. I was going to come to a board meeting last January and bring this issue to your attention. I even met with a previous board member over lunch to discuss what they felt was being done about the conflicts of interest with the board, and they suggested that I contact Kent Francine, your attorney. I subsequently learned that Mr. Newsom was already pursuing the matter and was much farther along in the process than I was, so I didn't pursue the matter with Mr. Francine. I just want to urge the board tonight to not approve the matter before them concerning the conflict of interest. I believe the issue needs to be handled in the proper manner. I don't believe just treating this as a small paperwork mix-up and getting the approval signed after the service is being provided is the proper way to handle the situation. We're not talking about small dollars here. From what I understand, we are approaching nearly a half a million dollars in undisclosed conflict of interest, and you are condoning the situation with the improper handling of this issue if you approve the matter before you tonight. I also understand you do not have an obligation to bid the work. But I would think if a board member was involved in any work with the school corporation, it would not even be a question of whether bids were obtained or not, given the perception of any impropriety. Bids should be obtained in all situations dealing with members of the board. So, I have just one question, and I would just like to know, when was the last time the insurance for the school corporation was bid? Thank you for your time, and I hope you do the right thing tonight and not approve the matter before you concerning the conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Next thing on the agenda is Employee of the Month, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Wari, I appreciate that. I would at this time ask that Marcia Freeman join me along with Jennifer Rice. As is the tradition that the board has been for a number of years, we like to recognize those employees that always go above and beyond. I would ask a question before we bring this out. How many of us have adolescents at home? Middle school children or have had them at home? And I'd have to try to feed them and try to satisfy them once you feed them. Well, if you had that experience, then you know why part of the reason we have Marcia with us today is she is the middle school cafeteria manager. And while we struggle with one, two, three, or four adolescents, try feeding eight hundred. Breakfast and lunch, five days a week. And doing it with an exceptional amount of quality and work, commitment, passion. And I want to thank you. As a former middle school principal, I know exactly, as a parent, I know better. And so, Marcia, on behalf of the school board, I would like to present you, which is a small token of our appreciation and a little card to go with it, and I want to say thank you. You know, these days it's changed a lot from, quote, cafeteria lady now to everything from nutrition and dietitian, making sure that good meals and not just tater tots and fish sticks. It's kind of a long way, and you have really, sort of, not only the corporation, but all the young women in the school. So, on behalf of the school board trustees, on behalf of our staff, Jennifer, and more importantly, on behalf of the young women in the school, I want to say thank you and how much we appreciate what you see. So, I want to say, amen. Thank you.
I was saying, we have been extremely short this year at your middle school, and Marcia has had five employees, and she's not listed yet. We've not cut a choice, we've not skipped on anything, we've kept everything. She's done an excellent job, so it's been a roller, so she won, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wari. I always enjoy that opportunity.
You're welcome. I'm Six, Consider Jennifer Routine Business Matters, Mr. Tate.
Yes, my pleasure to report to the board and the community this evening. Our monthly financial report shows these percents expended as of February 28th for the Education Fund, thirteen and eighty-four hundredths percent. Operations Fund, nine and forty-two hundredths percent expended. At this time, I've asked for approval of claims that are numbered 47868 through 48086, and payrolls for March 1st and March 15th. The claims total $1,532,375.20. The payrolls total $1,703,441.52, for a total of $3,235,816.72. Ask for approval of those at this time?
Thank you. Again, an approval for Consent Agenda Routine Business Matters, A and B, Financial Report as of February 28th, 2019, and the approval of claims for payment, claim numbers 47868 through 48086, and payrolls for March 1st, 2019, and March 15th, 2019.
I'd like to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Agenda for Routine Staff Matters, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Wari. Again, I'd ask the board's consideration for a consent agenda motion on the four areas this evening of classified employees, certified employees, staff communications, and the extracurricular account. First this evening, I bring, under classified employees, a number of employees. These are replacement employees in addition to the new substitute teachers and also the new SRO officer at the middle school. We have instructional aids, custodian, and food service, which, as you just heard, Mrs. Rice, is much needed. So, I would ask the board's consideration and their approval. Under Certified Staff this evening, I have a couple to present. One, Ms. Christina Cross, Lebanon Middle School Language Arts teacher, has requested an extended maternity leave, which will be for the entire next school year, 2019 to 2020. And then, Mr. O'Rourke is recommending Ms. Susan Ferris for a temporary language arts teaching position. This is to replace a temporary contract, or this will be a temporary contract for the maternity leave of Courtney Livsay at the high school. So, I would recommend those considerations. Then, moving on to ECA, I have the, Ms. Amanda Scoble, Lebanon Middle School Athletic Director, is recommending the following coaches for approval. Mr. John Limcooler as the girls' head tennis coach. Mr. Mike Corvatt as the girls' assistant tennis coach. Ms. Candace Huckstep as the girls' head track coach. Mr. Matt Wilson as the boys' head track coach. And then also this evening, Ms. Peyton Terrell as the girls' assistant track coach and Nathan Marcus as the girls' assistant track coach as well. And then, one final recommendation to provide for the board's consideration this evening, Mr. Phil Levine, Athletic Director at Lebanon High School, is recommending the approval for Ms. Mary Brown as a lifeguard at Lebanon High School when needed for swimming activities. So, I present those for the board's review and consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Can I get a motion for Agenda Routine Staff Matters, A through D?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Keith. Can I get a second? Any questions?
What swimming events are going on for a lifeguard requirement?
We have both the youth and then the girls' swim team was finishing, and the middle school is also finishing their season. So, she's been assigned to some of those events.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's consideration and approval of those requests this evening.
Next on the agenda, we have an iPad video.
I think he has to come from the cave, making a grand entrance.
Beth, you can join me up here real quick. In December, in preparation for our January PD Day with our elementary teachers, we decided that it would be fun to do some interviews with our elementary kids and have them talk about their iPads. So, we went around to all four elementary schools and interviewed a handful of kids, and so then we were asked to share the video we put together with you guys. So, we're going to show about four minutes of this video. There is more than that, but that's all we're going to show this evening, so.
Don't go too far.
So, Pages is like an app that you can write stories, and I'm making, I'm making on a story. I'm already on Chapter Three, and I can add, I add pictures, and it's called the Fox Alpha.
iPads more because it gave us iMovie, so we didn't have to make a poster about everything.
I think one of my favorite things about having the iPads is that it allows our teacher to interact with us, interact with us more through, instead of having to pass out papers. And it's, it's just a lot easier to communicate with the parents and communicate with the students in the classroom instead of having the children take student papers, the students taking papers home and the parents looking at them and then like, oh, this is homework, we keep this. It's not due until this day, but then it was due the next day. Teach, I just think it's a lot easier for us to have iPads so we can just automatically have all that information.
I made a gingerbread trap, and then I had a gingerbread man, and I had to trap it. So, we basically make a video, and we make a video of you trapping your gingerbread in your trap.
And this was a STEM project, and what is nice about it, it's in a station, and I'm busy with guided reading, so my students are able to video their STEM project, and then they can tear it down, and you don't have to save 12 projects, and they're able to show me what they did. Oh, because we were learning about apps, and so then you put the picture there, and then you wrote the, what's this called? Well, it's, the word says bat, but is that a label? Yeah, you were doing labeling, and then you went to the next one.
I'm talking about how I made my state project, and it's, it's Eclipse. So, what you just do is you make little, like you can make different things, like, and you can write on it and put pictures. And I thought it was fun to make because like you could add music. I'm going to show you some of it that I made. And there's different things that you could do. And you can, you can make it slower or faster. Like, I made this one slow because I made it too fast. And then, yeah. And you can add like emojis and stuff like that.
Um, I use my drawing tool, and I, like, it's kind of like drawing out your work and then just adding in words. I re, and the plus sign, it says, record audio. Okay, it comes up like this, and you can record yourself talking. And then, you can animate it, and however long your talking was, you can animate your drawing to read as long as your words are.
I think the iPads gave us more of an advantage because last year with the computers, we didn't get to learn about GarageBand, Keynote, or iMovie until this year, and that's why I think the iPads gave us an advantage.
What I like about my iPad is going on Keynote because I can turn boring old paper into a really fun presentation.
So, the kids were very eager to share what they, you know, their favorite parts and things that they were, you know, using them for this year. And that was, that was at December, so that was very into first semester. And even since then, in the last nine weeks of this nine week, this semester, I would say we've gotten, you know, a lot more, kids are doing more and everything with them too, so.
It's just been so great to work with the teachers, and they've, you know, exceeded our expectations with how they've implemented the iPads in their classrooms, and the kids just can teach us things just by the few times that we've been in to show them things and teach them things, and they just, it's amazing what they can do. And we've really enjoyed having the opportunity to implement these one-to-one devices with the kids.
So, it's just your...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
That's a question. Have the K... Question. Have the Ks worked well and the keyboards, is it all functioning properly? We have, they have worked really well. And we've had a couple cracked screens, but mostly just, they, they're pretty secure and pretty heavy duty. So we do have a contract with Apple that they send them in, get them fixed, and it's part of the contract. So, but they've, they've been pretty secure and they're, they're handy because the keyboards come off and the kids are able to manipulate them in different ways that way. Good.
So just as a reminder to those in the audience this evening, to the board, both Wade and Bethany have taken a sabbatical this year and become instructional technology coaches that are servicing the K through five group to assist with iPad implementation and also creation of instructional material. And so working with teachers and learning themselves as they go, learning from kids primarily. But they've done an excellent job in not only that integration component of their job, but also in working with a number of folks on the e-learning program that we plan to have in place next year. And so it's been kind of a mix of multitasking from working on instructional strategies to implementation of the hardware, not only in instruction, but also in everyday activities, whether it's students displaying projects, as we saw here on the video, or working with the program and planning for future use of technology. It's really allowed us to maximize the purchase that we made in a K-12 technology-based educational program. So they've really worked hard in the K-5. Wade coming from the secondary realm and Bethany from the elementary, and it's been a great blend. I think if you were to ask the administrators and the staff of the schools they service, they would wholeheartedly endorse the work they've done. And as superintendent, I want to endorse that as well. It's been a very positive addition. And we continue to see growth, continue to see some aha moments, I guess I would describe them, of how it's implemented. We've had a really good partnership with Apple. Apple's provided some PD or professional development to our staff, and that's been then enhanced and expanded with the work of Wade and Bethany. So this is just this very small visual sampling of what we see in the classroom every day. It's not your grandmother and grandfather's elementary school anymore. It's quite different. So I want to compliment them and thank them for the work they're doing and continue to do. And appreciate the board's support, not only the personnel, but the funding and the implementation of what's really, I wouldn't say cutting-edge technology, because who knows what cutting-edge technology is anymore, but very progressive, innovative utilization of technology to assist the classroom teacher in maximizing student learning. So I appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Thank you both. That's very exciting. Next item we have is Inwell update. Ms. Lynette Clark.
Well, Ms. Clark is coming to present, and the board may recall that we took the initiative several months ago to expand our partnership with Inwell in the realm of student mental health and become more proactive. And while Lynette and her team at Inwell have done an exceptional job working with us in the past, we've become more formalized and truly more structured, and I believe more impactful. In that time since the board approved this, the state now is moving towards the mandating of mental health. So again, I like to point out that through the insight of the board and through the partnerships we have in our community, we're really a step ahead. I hate to be a step ahead in mental health because that's not something you really want to address, but it is critical. And so the work that Lynette's done and her staff, and the proactive approach that the board has taken with the authorization for not only funding, but for the implementation, was really held up in the state legislature as an example of some of the school corporations around the state that were out ahead of the issue. Not following it after Noblesville issue, but out ahead of the issue. So I want to thank Lynette, and she's gonna give us a little update today, but I wanted to update the board on where we are with regards to legislative, kind of being held up as an example.
One thing before we get started, we just recently found out that, what was the number? Ninety-five percent of school corporations in the state don't have any mental health capacity to that. So that's something that I think that is very important, so when we, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, well, thank you, and I'm very grateful to hear that we are ahead, but I'm glad to be a part of that as well because it is a great need. We are currently serving two hundred and sixty-four active youth in the school corporation. I can break this down by school. At the high school, we have seventy-two, middle school forty-seven. At Stokes, fifty-eight, Harney, thirty-six, Central, thirty-eight, and Perry Worth, thirteen. All of that, I think since our, since the beginning of the year, has definitely increased in each of the schools, actually. We see a wide range of different diagnoses that we're, that we're working with. Depression, anxiety, and ADHD are definitely the most common, but we do have some youth with mood disorders, substance abuse disorders, as well as even eating disorders. So a wide scope that we're working with. We continue to provide crisis assessments for the youth whenever that may arise. Unfortunately, February was a very busy month, not totally uncommon, actually. But we had eight total crises in the school corporation. Three of those at the high school, and three at Stokes and two at Harney. So as you can see, it is impacting our younger kids. Luckily, in these situations, none of the kids did need, they didn't need hospitalization, so we were able to create safety plans and work with the school as well as home to ensure the child's safety. We, I don't know if you guys would recall, but we did kind of have a target number of nine FTEs into the school corporation. We're at ten point two right now. And so that's getting us probably, overall, on average, two hundred to two hundred and fifty clinical hours that we're spending with the youth every week. And so that's really a lot of service time. Now, I will say that kind of how those FTEs are allocated weren't exactly how I kind of visioned it, but we're also trying to make sure we're meeting the need. So for example, we do have one point four at the high school for therapists, as well as then, if you remember, there's another component of skills coaches, so they're at point four. At the middle school, one therapist and point four. Stokes, we're up to one point six therapists, as well as one point six skills. So we are definitely seeing the most need, and some of those youth maybe need more frequent than some of our other schools. Harney, we're at point eight and trying to increase that a little bit. And point six skills, Central is the same. And then Perry Worth, we're probably a little heavy at the moment with point eight and point four skills. So kind of making some adjustments without adjusting the provider that the youth are seeing because I think the continuity for the kids is the most important thing. So I'm trying to be very mindful of that when, when making any adjustments. We are continuing to do the weekly health coaching group at the high school. So that's been a really neat experience to work with our kids who have type one diabetes. I learned there were a lot more that actually have that diagnosis than I even knew when starting this program almost five years ago. But we've enjoyed to be able to be, continue to be a part of that and helping the kids change beha, work on changing their behaviors that go along with healthier habits, because we're definitely not diabetic experts by any stretch. We're working on behaviors. But it's been a neat experience to see them grow and kind of become a support for one another. So that's another function that we've ended up being able to provide. And then Harney has two groups, for third graders and fourth graders, that we're doing. And I think, I think it's our third graders, there's five, and fourth graders, maybe eight. So being able to teach them coping skills and a group setting has been, I know the therapists really enjoy being able to do that. So we're open to doing that in any of the schools that identify needs for specific groups. We did complete the lifelines education for the middle school last month, and that is suicide prevention. It's four sessions, forty-five minutes each. And this month is when we are going to complete the high schools. So we'll have hit, I think, most students that have health. So I think this summer, we're gonna, we have a date for summer school time as well to try to hit. I believe it's those eighth graders that may be taking class over the summer. And then we are also doing another crisis intervention team training this summer here at the high school. We did this two years ago. And it was very neat to, to see the law enforcement, as well as the school corporation, working together and kind of toward a common goal of helping individuals with the mental health or addiction crisis. So I'm really looking forward to that. We already have several from the school corporation signed up, some administrators, as well as several of the nurses and some of our SROs, so very excited about that. And then lastly, I was going to mention that in partnership with Mental Health America of Boone County, we are doing the Day Reporting Center. And that was previously done by the Youth Opportunity Center, and that's for higher-risk youth that maybe are involved with probation, or could be Department of Child Services. And so we reopen that in February. It's actually a Mental Health America building. But I think that's gone very well for the youth, having more structure after school, place to go, do homework, get fed a meal, and do some therapeutic and independent living skills, while also, I think we've been able to manage to have fun with them as well. So I've been very excited to see the progress of that program and continue to provide opportunities for the, for the youth.
When you say ten point two, is that therapist and life skills coaches combined?
Yes, that's combined, yes. Uh-huh, that is correct.
As a professional in the mental health field, I would like to thank you, Lynette, for all the work you all do in our schools. Social, emotional learning is important, and I think this is key to preventing a lot of those tragedies that happen to the best that we can. So I'm always gonna be a proponent of mental health in schools because that's my world, but, but I think it's a very important service that we offer. So thank you.
Do, do the kids open up to the counselors when they, it's just one-on-one? Do they say what's going on and they're-
Yes, oftentimes they do. I mean, we, we do a pretty good job of creating a safe environment and that trust and building rapport. That's half the battle, is getting that rapport built, actually. And so if we can build a therapeutic alliance, we're gonna probably make some pretty decent progress with the youth. Sometimes some of our challenges may be getting families to be able to engage for various, a variety of reasons. So sometimes we can only make it so far with, with just the youth. But we certainly do everything that we can to continue to support them. But yes, you would be surprised at the things we do learn, but we are bound by confidentiality.
With the exception of, if anybody is at risk for harm to themselves or someone else, do we have the reporting guidelines through ECF or-
Have you ever had any, like, blowback from, from home saying, I don't want you talking to my child?
Yes, absolutely. I would say that's not the norm, luckily. I think most families are either kind of indifferent about it, or I would say probably women have actually been engaging in that. So that's, I would say good. But we have had circumstances that, that they don't want them to participate, and that's the time they don't.
What's, what's one of the biggest challenges that you see as far as you being able to provide your, your service within our schools? Whether it be, whether it be, you know, the parents, whether, you know, just-
Sometimes, yes, getting a hold of parents and trying to get that consent. So I think that we've been talking and trying to work out a way for, because some just aren't returning calls. And so if the support's here and we have that ability, then maybe it's not required. Um, not required.
You broke it.
That, that they have the consent, that, that would be one solution. If we can get around doing that, that would be helpful. Other than that, sometimes it's logistics. I know that even in our own practice, we have several different locations because it's hard to, I mean, therapists need a private space, a private room. So having that privacy, but the schools have been really-
Great about working with us. And as we're growing, I mean, as I mentioned, we have, I mean, at Stokes, I have at least three full-time equivalents running around there at any given time. So they've, they've been really great about, you know, doing what they can to help us achieve that because they want the kids to get services. But, but it's still a challenge. And then trying to avoid the core classes, which is just, I mean, it's the nature of what we're doing. So it's really nice to be able to be here and meet the kids here and create, or eliminate that barrier of, for one, there's only so many evening hours. And two, that can help with transportation barriers, or if they were having to leave school during the day, it's less time having to leave. So those are all positive things, but, but us kind of scheduling around those core classes, which we know is important, can be a challenge. But I think it's all fair and part of the game.
Has there been, like, any one roadblock that you wish you could do something about to make it better for, for you, the school? I mean, I mean, within reason, you know?
Um, nothing, no, nothing that I can think of, other than kind of that first point I made. If we can really work out a way to be able to service more kids, that maybe we don't have to have the parent. We want the parent involvement, but if there's anything that we can do to support the kids without having that, I think that's gonna be our just biggest impact that we can make.
Well, thanks for watching.
Well, thanks.
Thank you, Lynette.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Agenda item ten, the Culinary Arts Teacher Training Presentation.
You dress the part this evening. Thank you.
I am Jenny Merritt, the culinary, one of the culinary teachers here at the high school. I was able to go to the World Pastry Cup in France in January. I went with a bunch of teachers and, or chefs, and so we all got a coat. My mentor, Chef Cindy Hawkins, invited me to it. She thought it would be really cool. She actually went to the pastry, French pastry school in Chicago. And then I had her as a teacher at Ivy Tech when I went through my pastry school, so. So what we went to is called the Coupe de Manne de la Passerie, which is World Cup pastry competition. Competitions every two years. Oh. Okay. Okay, thanks. It was in Lyon, France, Lyon, France, which is known for, it's like the world food capital. Chef Paul Bukos, Paul, sorry, Paul Bukos is a three-star Michelin chef. And Michelin stars are, like, you have to do certain things in order to get them. So he's pretty big over there. Okay, this was Team USA's things that they had to turn in. So they had to do a, a chocolate cake, an ice cream torte, and a plate of dessert. And then in the center there, they had to do a chocolate and a sugar sculpture. And they had eight hours to do it in. So this is Team USA. I was able to meet the alternate, Jordan Snyder, and then I also met another one from years past. Then the Chef Victor Dagtan, he brought home the winning ice sculpture. So that's what's in the corner. And it was just amazing to watch them. Like, he had chainsaws and he was chipping away at this. And they started at like five o'clock in the morning. We didn't get to come in until eight, so he was well into it, but it was very interesting. And then when they presented these to the judges, there were sixteen judges. Everybody was from a different country. And the culinary school over there, the kids brought them in and served the judges, and so they all ate at the same time, and it was really fun. So USA came in fourth place. And I was able to meet some really famous chefs to me. So one of, the two chefs I met were the authors of my books that I bought. And as you can see, I got stranded in the airport, so I decided what I was gonna teach the kids. So, um, so that was fun. And up at the right corner is Chef Eddie from Belgium, and he, I met him on the tram. And he was just so interesting to talk to, and he became a Facebook friend of mine. He like asked me to be his friend. I was like, okay. But that was really fun to meet him. So these are just some of the different things that we saw. Along with the pastry competition, they had a catering competi, or catering trade show. So these were a lot of the different things that you could see. And of course, they have like the machineries and all that they're trying to sell. And of course, they have like the machineries and all that they're trying to sell. I had a lot of interesting food I got to eat. I got to go to a dinner, which was ten courses in five and a half hours. No, I did not finish all my plate. There were, there was a couple of guys that were really hungry. So I'd be like this and they'd give me their plate that was empty and they would take mine and finish it. So I asked some of my third-year teacher, or I'm sorry, third-year students to give me a sentence or two about our culinary program here at LHS. This is some of their responses. Over here at the table and everybody's welcome to them, that we made some French pastries for you all. We have an apple tart, which the apple, there's apple on front, it's supposed to be looking like a rose. Some of them do. And the kids were like, "You can't serve these." And I said, "Yes, I can." And they're like, "But they don't look like, they're not perfect." And I said, "Nothing's perfect. It's okay. You did it." I'm very proud of them. We made eclairs, we made cream puffs, and we made jam tarts. So there's cherry, lemon curd, raspberry, and peach. So. So they were, some of the things that they were saying were like, they liked the parent-teacher conference when we do the soup competition. One of the girls, the third year does desserts. So this year they did a mural out of cupcakes. And so that was pretty exciting to do. And that's it.
Thank you. How many kids do you have in your program?
So I have twenty-four in the class and I have four classes. And then Jared has five classes of twenty-four.
This is something we talk about, just what we offer program-wise here when we have, you know, all your AP classes. And then we have culinary arts and welding and, I mean, this is pretty cool how many different courses we offer. And in culinary, I remember last year Peggy, I mean, we had a kid for Avid, she was going out to New York.
Shelby, yes.
Yeah, did she still go?
As far as I know, she's still there.
Yeah, I mean, she wanted to be a chef and she went out to New York for that.
Yes.
She talked highly about the culinary program here, so.
And we now are dual-credited for our second year.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to get the paperwork done so that we can also be third year.
Okay, good.
And that would be the first four classes of Ivy Tech.
Okay. Awesome. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Graduation pathways, Mr. O'Worrell, O'Rourke. This will not be as exciting as Jennifer's.
It's not food.
Or the pictures won't be as delicious, but nonetheless important. And Shelby is doing internship, by the way, at Disney World at one of the really nice restaurants there. I ran into her grandmother the other day. She was catching me up on her, so. So let's talk about graduation pathway. And I guess I would start by saying this is probably one of the biggest shifts that I've experienced in education. As we go through this, we've been living under the, you know, auspice that you passed the I-Step as a graduation qualifying. And to see a shift from that is pretty remarkable. And it's really important that we, you know, understand the gravity and kind of how it works. I thank Mrs. Keith today. Our counselors did a talk with some parents that came in and Mrs. Keith came in. So if you want to help with the presentation, I'll be happy to include you. I want to start before we kind of go through the slide through it. And I'm going to try to make this, you know, a very in-depth, fifty-seven-page detailed document in just a few minutes because I know time is important. And I think maybe it'd be best to answer questions after I kind of give you a little bit of background. But I want to start with what's really important and I think Ms. Keith saw that today, is the amount of work and time that our counselors have put into this. They deserve a huge thank you and appreciation. It is a, it's basically having an IEP for every student. And to really look at every pathway for every student. And I'll give you some numbers at the end that'll kind of let you know how much kind of has gone into it. But I'll start with, really want to thank them. I want to thank our administrative team. Probably for about the whole first semester, this was a weekly agenda item. And we would walk away from our meetings and study some more and then come back and redo something and figure it out. Kristin Scott, who a lot of her courses are part of this, joined us for a lot of that. So I thank Kristin. Like I said, it was a lot of chefs in the kitchen on this. Thanks Jennifer Merritt for that. So with that, I just want to kind of give a little timeline because this was something that really was kind of dropped like a bombshell, although we knew it was coming. The State Board of Education had a committee that was, you know, looking through this. And they spent some, quite a bit of time putting this together. And November, December of two thousand seventeen is when officially said, "We're going to migrate to a graduation pathways, starting with the cohort twenty twenty-three, our current eighth graders now. At the time, they were seventh graders." So we knew it was coming, thought we had time on our side. And we were just shocked that we had time on our side, to be honest. May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, a memo came out that said, "Oh, by the way, even though we don't have guidelines for this yet, you can use this to graduate some of your seniors because there was a lot of kids around the state that hadn't passed I-Step." So it was a little late to do a whole lot with about a week before graduation, we got that memo. But it was interesting to say that we're going to, we're going to go ahead and implement this with current high school students, not just wait for the kids that were in seventh grade. Late July two thousand eighteen, the document is dated July eleventh, but we got a memo late July. And that document is really the guiding document. And there's a link in this PowerPoint at the end if you have insomnia or would like to learn more. This is the document right here. It has got a lot of information and is ever-changing. They have already announced some changes for the class of twenty twenty-three, but allowing us to operate under this for our current high school students, ninth through twelfth grade. So that was kind of the timeline. So we heard about that, hey, we can start using this in late July. And so August first, we just dug in like crazy. And we're still digging in, but we feel really good about where we are. So that's kind of a little bit of the timeline. Want to talk a little bit about the graduation options. There's kind of two paths. So you got, we're living in two worlds right now. Every ninth through twelfth grader is living in two worlds. They're living in the old world of get your forty or whatever the credits are for your diploma, complete your diploma requirements. That's always box one or bucket one, as we refer to. And the second is pass I-Step. That's still the most efficient way to get there for ninth through twelfth graders right now. And we're trying to encourage kids not to get too enamored by the pathways. That's really the preferred pathway for ninth through twelfth graders. That's the quickest way and it gives them the most flexibility within their schedule because they can then take anything they want because they've passed that. They also find that out as early as their sophomore year, the end of their sophomore year, which makes it nice that they've met their graduation requirement. So we like that. The other pathway that is going on at the same time is called graduate pathways. We refer to the first one as I-Step, a grade ten pathway, and then the second one is graduation pathway. And once again, this can be used for students in high school now, ninth through twelve. It will have to be used for the class of twenty twenty-three, our current eighth graders. They will not be taking I-Step when they get into high school. So three buckets, once again, and I'll go into those. The three buckets for the pathway are complete your course requirements for your selected diploma, your employability skills, you have to show that. And then you have to show your post-secondary readiness competency through a variety of ways that I'll touch base on quickly. So let's talk, take a look at the graduation qualifying exam, the I-Step as we know it. Basically, this slide is just letting you know that students right now, freshmen on up, still take I-Step and math and English and take what we call I-Learn now in science at the end of their Biology One class. They do not have to pass that exam to graduate, but they have to pass the math and English exam. So that's still the case for the class all the way through twenty twenty-two. So let's get into the graduation pathway. That's the one we're here to talk about. So bucket one, you know, is basically you've got to get your coursework done for whether it's an academic honors, technical honors, Core Forty, or general diploma. So that's the same as it would be for our I-Step pathway. Bucket two is employability skills. So they have to show, and I'll talk about that in a second, either through work-based learning, through service-based learning, or project-based learning, that they have met their employability skills. And so if you want to reference a sheet that you have that says at the top, "Graduation Pathways Employability Skills Verification Form", this is a form that we've filled out. Basically, what a student would have to do is whether through a job outside of school, through an activity, through work-based learning in school, through a sport, through an intensive project that may be completed in a class that qualifies. They would get this form, complete this form. Basically, the estimated number of hours they want to have is seventy-five hours put into something. That could be four H. That can be a large variety of things. The list is really quite long of things students could do. And our counselors work with each individual student to try to identify what one or more things have they done that would qualify for this bucket. And they get this form filled out. The student does a summary section at the bottom. And on the back, we have put on this form what the state employability skills benchmarks are. And so we ask the kids to read through this and identify, what have you learned through this experience on the job, through four H, or whatever, whatever that opportunity may be. And then reference that, that you've learned these employability skills through that opportunity. So they have to have this form completed that qualifies them for bucket two, okay? Bucket three, and I'm going to reference now the sheet that looks like this with a lot of boxes. And there's a lot of small print because there's a lot of information on this. But this is really what is kept on every single student now as we go through. And you can see on the far left-hand side is diploma requirements. So every student has to have their English and math and so forth. So they go down through that far left column. You can see in the middle column, we start talking about additional courses for academic honors diploma. So and technical honors diploma. So really, the first couple of columns are tracking a student's diploma type. The third column, as we get over to the third column, notice there's a general diploma checklist. And then we start getting into the different boxes. So the first part up there is, did the student pass I-Step? Or are they going to have to maybe do a waiver? And what is, what diploma type do they have? So we're looking to see did they pass I-Step. If they did not pass I-Step, we go down lower and we start working through the pathways. So as you notice, there's diploma type is bucket one. Bucket two is the learns demonstrate employability skills. And then bucket three, there's a long list of those. And I want to kind of go through those with you now because this is how a student basically replaces I-Step. So, oops, I went back up here.
Hey Kevin.
Yes.
What is Lebman's I-Step pass rate?
Yeah, so let me get into that at the end if you're okay with that.
No, that's fine, yeah.
So I could hit some data at the end. It's a great question, okay? So with that, if you can see, one way that you can accomplish bucket three is get an AHD, an academic honors diploma, or technical honors diploma. And that is highly regarded because that shows a student is taking, you know, really difficult courses and meeting the highest diploma type. So the state is happy to say, if you get that, you've qualified for graduation. The big problem with that is you don't know that until the very end of the semester, the senior year, because there's courses, second semester, senior courses. So you can't rely on that. But when we document what diploma type a student got or what, how they qualify for bucket three, that is something, you know, they may qualify three or four ways, all right? They may qualify, but that is a highly regarded one. So when we enter why a kid's going to graduate in our graduation report, we're going to pick the ones that are most advantageous for the student and us. And I'll talk about some that aren't as advantageous but still qualify in a second. So academic honors is a big one. ACT, you can qualify by getting the benchmark scores on ACT, but it's an all or nothing. You can't get English and ACT and math and SAT. It has to be on the ACT test. So if you get an eighteen or a twenty-two on the English, one of the English tests, or twenty-two, a twenty-two or a twenty-three on the math or science, that qualifies you. But you have to hit both of those, all right? That would qualify you. The nice thing about that is you can take the SAT pretty early. So a student may take the SAT as a sophomore, check that box. It makes it, and that's a highly regarded one too because that shows they're college and career ready. There's the scores for SAT, four eighty in writing, five thirty in math. If you hit those two benchmarks, check the box. We anticipate, it hasn't come out yet, but we're going to have to have an accountability test for our school letter grade. They're going to do away with I-Step, so how are they going to find that out? We're expecting that we're going to be giving as part of the school day, either the SAT or the ACT, starting with the current eighth graders at some point. When they're about sophomores or juniors, we'll be giving it to all of them. I'm kind of anticipating junior year is what they'll probably say. And so everybody will take it one time. That's how they'll determine part of our school grade. But it'll also be an opportunity for students to possibly qualify for graduation. Moving on. ASFAB. We've been given the ASFAB. We started this year. As soon as we found out it was an option, we gave it to every junior and senior in late September that hadn't passed the I-Step yet. And we picked up a lot of kids that were able to get the thirty-one or higher AFQT score. And so I want to be very clear, if you have someone ask, "Why is my student taking a military test?" They're taking it for high school graduation. We are, we've checked the box that we are not sharing the results with the military. We're not sending out numbers and so forth. If a student wants to provide that result, provide that result to a recruiter, that's their choice to do it, but we're not sending that out. It is totally for an in-house opportunity to graduate high school. It also has a great feature, if a student does take it, is one of the great things about the ASFAB is it has a really good aptitude portion to it. And they use that for a lot of their aptitude training. And so a student does get a report back, not only with their AFQT score, but also with a complete aptitude if they take the whole test hopefully seriously with some areas that they would, they would really be well-equipped to maybe go into. But we're not giving that to all kids. We're giving it currently to kids that have not passed I-Step. Now, I could see down the road, once I-Step goes away, we may give the ASFAB to a whole, to a complete class at that point. So that would be one. But I will be honest with you, the state does not want to see schools using ASFAB as every kid graduating. They're not looking for ASFAB to replace I-Step. So for us, if a kid qualifies any other way, we will use that other way when we fill out their graduation report. ASFAB will be the last one we pick. Not that it's bad, but once again, if the state sees that that's what's happening, they're going to say, "What's all this other great stuff we're doing? We want to see kids qualifying other ways." So I just want to kind of point that out. Last couple of things that I have up here, if a student gets a state in industry-recognized certification. And Mr. Burtron, as you mentioned, we have, we're blessed to have a lot of great programs. Now we're getting into where that really takes effect. And we are really lucky for a school of a thousand to have as many programs as we have. So state and industry-recognized certifications are hard to get. And to be honest, you can look at the list and we don't offer a lot of them. Most high schools don't. You might be able to get some at career centers and some of those things, but we don't have a lot of them. But we do have CNA. I think we had about thirty students, Kristin, is that right? About thirty students that got their CNA certification this year. That checks their graduation box right there for those kids. We have some students through our Ag program that are taking the pesticide licensing test. And if they pass that and get that certification, they can check the box. We have a number of kids that are, that have got that last year and are getting, and are going to be testing here soon this year. So those are good. AP and dual-credit, if a student takes three courses and receives six credits at at least a C minus minimum GPA or higher, one of them has to be a core area class in AP or dual-credit, they can check the box. And we have, we're at a point, we have over a hundred accumulated dual-credits now. I think we're getting close to about forty classes that we offer that are dual-credit here at the high school in one capacity or other through some of our programs like precision machining at the Gene House Training Center. So we have a lot of opportunities for dual-credit. We're able to check that box for a lot of kids. And once again, that would be something that's much higher-regarded than the ASFAB. Last couple of areas, the last one up here is career and tech ed. Concentrator, once again, you know that we have a lot of CTE courses. Kristin, do you remember, I hate to put you on the spot, but I think it was around sixty predetermined courses and we had somewhere close to about fifth, or pathways? So we had about, the state recognized about sixty, it might have been fifty-seven, potential CTE concentrator pathways. When we went through ours and looked at what we offer and what we could offer, we were close to about fifty. We had the vast majority of those opportunities. Lot of schools might have six, seven, eight, ten. So a kid to get their CTE concentrator may have to take something they're not even interested in just to get that CTE concentrator. For us, we have a really wide variety because as you know, we have a lot of programs. So as long as a student hits their, you know, building trades is a great example. Take intro to construction, take two years of building trades, check the box. And the other great thing about building trades, it counts as work-based learning, so it checks their box two at the same time. So they get their box two and their box three checked in one, in one sequence. So there's a lot there. I wanted to condense it as much as I could because this could go on forever. Let me talk down some data real quick so you get a kind of idea of what does this mean for Lebman High School. This is really the first year that we've been able to really offer the pathways as an opportunity for graduation. So we have two hundred and fifty-three seniors in our cohort right now. This is as of today's data, all right? We polled it this morning. There's two hundred and forty of those students that are diploma-track, thirteen of those students that are certificate-track. And I mentioned on there, some of those thirteen students that are certificate-track may have been with us. They're not, like, we have thirteen kids in that cohort. Some of the certificate-track students, like in Miss Bohannon's Life Skills Program, stay with us till they're twenty-one, twenty-two years old. So that number kind of grows because you might have six that are originally in this class, but you've got a fifth year, a couple of six years and so forth. So I want to make sure that thirteen, you have an understanding of what that is. So I want to make sure that thirteen, you have an understanding of what that is. Hundred-and-forty-nine of the two-hundred, two-hundred-and-forty on diploma-track has, have passed I-Step at this point, okay? Both parts, check the box. Fifty-one have met it through graduation pathways. So when you think about that, you're looking at somewhere in the vicinity of better than twenty percent, twenty-three, twenty-four percent of our students are using the pathways this year. So that's a significant number of our students. We've got fifteen that are in the process of meeting the graduation pathway, so that's going to add to that number. As long as they finish their courses this semester, we've got a pathway in plan for them and they know what they have to get, and hopefully that works out. So we have fifteen more. We have thirteen that are still trying to qualify for a pathway, or they'll be considered for an I-Step waiver if they have the GPA. We are also going to be offering the ASFAB on April sixteenth a second time, trying to get one more chance for seniors, but we'll also test our juniors that haven't passed I-Step one more time. Once again, to try to get to that thirty-one. We have twelve who have not completed coursework yet. So there's twelve that are behind in their credits. To be honest, they may finish in summer school, or they may come back next year. And honestly, I'm a big proponent, I don't care if it takes them five or six years, I want them to stay in school until they finish. We'll take a hit on the graduation rate, but we still, you know, we're still working with them. So we have twelve kids right now that we don't think are going to make it because of credits. Once again, we had thirteen certificate-track students that are fifth year or greater with us. So that's kind of our data to talk about. How do we rank? I didn't do it this year, but I did it last year. As far as our I-Step scores, you know, we always want to do better, so I'm never going to say we're where we want to be. But when we looked at about sixty schools of a variety of sizes, you know, from the large schools like Carmel to schools close to us like Frankfurt to Batesville, to all. We looked at some schools that we really thought we, you know, had reason to compare to. And there wasn't a school with our free-reduce number that outscored our scores. There's a lot of schools that had much lower free-redues that we outscored. We feel good that we're meeting, you know, we want to do better, but based on what we have, we feel like we're doing a really good job. But once again, we have, we have work to do and we're not satisfied. So I'm happy to answer questions, I know there's a lot more to this, but I wanted to give you a good nutshell version of what we have.
Kevin, have you run into where a student moves in to the school and they've missed the cutoff or the timeframe or, you know, is there something to catch that child up?
So that's a great question, and yes, it's happening. So you have kids that move in, especially kids that move in from out of state. If we catch them by their junior year, it helps because in order to go, to do an I-Step waiver, they have to have taken I-Step at least once. And so we like to catch them early enough so we can have a chance at a waiver. There's a few loopholes, but to be quite honest, the state's really strict on that. You, they kind of leave it up to you, you have to find something for them, that may be ASFAB, you know, because you could take that quickly. They have to find something that, there's no exceptions, there's waivers, but there's no exceptions to bucket three. So, and currently, the kids that are coming into us now that are seniors, they're still under I-Step. But if they're coming from a place that they don't have a lot of CTE, it's, it's a struggle. So we're going to have to find through SAT, ACT, you know, the ASFAB, something that we can get them qualified for. Or we hopefully can work through a waiver with them.
Kevin, I think it's great that we've got the different pathways now and we're not gearing towards, you know, one specific test. But one thing that's, I'm looking at this, this numbers here, you're saying that a hundred-and-forty-nine of our two-hundred-and-fifty-three seniors?
Two-hundred-and-forty diploma-track.
Okay, two-hundred-and-forty. So we've, we've got only probably, what, sixty-two, sixty-three percent that have passed?
Yeah, probably about that, that have passed both parts.
So what, what, where do you think that is, is it the test, is it, I mean?
Gosh, now you're really getting into, you know, a lot of stuff.
No, I just.
Yeah, I mean, my honest opinion is, they, this, the reason they opened up, I'm convinced, the reason they opened up the pathways now instead of waiting for the class of twenty-twenty-three is because across the state, there's record number of kids that haven't passed I-Step. When your first-time pass rate, not at Lebanon, in the state, we're higher at Lebanon, but the state's around thirty-two, thirty-three percent. One out of every three kids that takes the math I-Step pass it the first time, you can't tell me that's a valid test. I mean, you're talking to every kid in the state and only a third of them can pass? I wouldn't want to be mean, but I'd like for our legislators to take I-Step and see how their pass rate is. I'd be curious what that would be, but you're right, Robert. It's, it's a, it's a struggle, but I think we're on the right direction with pathways. I think that helps, we don't want to devalue our core courses and our academics, but I think, you know, telling a kid because you can't pass a, pass a math or an English test, you're not going to be successful in life, we all know that's not true.
Now, employability is a big part of that.
Right, absolutely.
How many times can a student take that test, the I-Step?
I-Step, they, well, technically, you take it at the end of your sophomore year. You could, if you take summer school, take it in summer school. You take a retest in December of your junior year, you take a retest in late February, early March of your junior year. You take a retest possibly again in summer school, you take a retest in December, and you take a retest again your senior year in March. So I mean, six, seven times potentially. But I will tell you, a lot of our kids and we, they have to make the decision, a lot of our, especially seniors, that have taken it over and over and over and, and you know, maybe haven't passed one part, but they've passed one part but not the other, and they qualified with the ASFAB, they were allowed to pull themselves out of testing. So as part of those fifty-one plus fifteen that are also in the hopper, so part of those sixty-five kids pulled themselves out of I-Step because they tried enough times. I've qualified for graduation, I'm, you know, going to remediation and all the stuff we're doing, I need to be focused on my grades. And so it's been okay. You know, we've encouraged kids, if you're going to go to college and you, and you, you still have that as a goal, you probably should stay in the I-Step hopper. But if you know you're going to school to work apprenticeships or anything of that nature, let's start working on that and focusing on that. Because that, that academics looks a little differently.
I think there are a lot of great things about the pathways, it's measuring some of the things that, like you say, how valid is the test? Things that we really want to know about kids. Obviously, it's a lot more for you to keep track of and, and the student services.
Yeah, counselors for sure.
Right. How's all that going to happen? And maybe this is too new.
You know, like I said, I can't sing their praises enough.
I know.
I'm not blowing smoke when I say, I bet they've gone through every senior's transcript and grades half a dozen times this year, over and over and over. As we learn more, we look at other things, and how can we get them there? We've changed schedules, we've used Play-Doh, we've, which is our online program to pick up a credit here or there. I mean, it's been a lot of work by them and I, they've done it without complaint. Matter of fact, they've done it really, really well. Megan Lewis, our director, was going to be here tonight, and she went and got tested for the flu right after school and came back positive, so I said, you probably shouldn't. But I mean, I really, and you saw it today, they're really dedicated to what they're doing.
They are, and I, I, I would compliment them as well. I think they gave an excellent presentation this morning, just the logistics of managing the paperwork or the, however the system will, will be that you're going to keep track of all this is, it's huge, so.
And we have, with every student in the high school, we have a Google Doc by cohort. And on that Google Doc, as soon as someone qualifies, we're putting in what they're qualifying for and so forth. So we can look at a spreadsheet at any given time and see what a kid has. And so we, we created that, we track every single kid with every piece of their both I-Step and their graduation pathway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burtron.
We have a reading adoption recommendation.
Good evening. About every six years, we come before you with a recommendation for reading adoption for elementary, to cycle for about a six-year timeframe. This year, the adoption committee was comprised of some primary teachers from each of the elementary schools, intermediate teachers, and some kindergarten representatives. And then the administrative liaison that served in that capacity along with me was Chad Salzman. They all did a great job. We met four times in person, but then we also met virtually. Chad is quite savvy in using technology to help with communication and facilitate some of the input gathering. So all teachers had an opportunity to provide input through the representatives. And we also had publishers come and do presentations for us. Rather than us sending a whole bunch of teachers to a caravan, we brought our three choices that we had narrowed it down to to evening meetings, and teachers attended that to, you know, hear their whole program overview so we could kind of evaluate what we were looking for and what they had to offer. So the publisher choice that we chose was by a company called Heinemann, and the actual resource is called Fonos Apenel Classroom. And I will tell you that in my thirty-eight years as an elementary educator, I have reviewed a lot of reading materials. And this is probably the most robust program that I've ever come across. And we learned about it actually when some of our staff members attended Read and Recovery Conference last year in Ohio. We typically send a team every year and they came back just raving about it. So I've asked Chad Martin to have queued up for you a brief video overview that kind of gives you an idea about what this program has to offer. When Elizabethi did her chores, she also tied Eva onto her back with a kanga. Mama had to help a little. Why do we think Elizabethi keeps doing what her mama's doing? What do you think? Mooney?
Because she wants to learn how to take care of babies.
What do you do with a nose like this? Which animals do you think these noses belong to? "No, no," he said, "an elephant looks like a tree."
It's a bear! Go through the mud puddle, splash, 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 go through the river, splash, 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 splash.
Harry, what do you think the author wants you to think about rainforest?
The author wants you to think about how beautiful is the rainforest and how good it is.
The word "come," would this go on the cat or scent side?
Cat.
The word circus?
Scent.
Boys and girls, we've been looking at a lot of words, and today, we're going to use our names to notice that words are made up of letters. Make sure you're looking at the letters on your yellow folder. Good mix and fix, my friends.
I have two As and two Ls in my name, but I only have one Y.
How can you tell, or what do you notice in the illustration that tells you that they feel happy?
Because they have pink cheeks.
He lives in a house. I also heard her friend say, what he eats?
Pancakes.
I'm going to have you go to page ten and eleven. Tell me what season you think it might be in this page. Eva?
Spring.
It's spring, how can you tell, Julie?
Um, like the forest, it's not like snow, there isn't snow anywhere, but that is adorable.
A little baby monkey, they are cute.
This tail keeps an animal from flying.
Does that make sense? Try that again.
This tail keeps an animal from flying.
There you go, that makes more sense than flying, doesn't it?
Yeah.
What else was funny about that present?
Chester thinks someone's name, guess who, but nobody's names can be guess who.
All right, boys and girls, take the letters you have in front of you and make the word "me."
Me.
Charlotte, what picture did you choose? What does hen rhyme with?
Ten.
Let's all say that together. Ten, hen. Why do you think that Max was using his imagination?
Because he doesn't want to be bored in his room. She laughed because she remembers when she started roller skating in the house. She started laughing and she thought, why am I listening to this?
At the beginning, we said we were going to practice taking turns and looking at each other when we were talking. How do you think we did with taking turns today?
Um, great.
You think we did great?
Uh-huh, extreme great.
What books do you have there?
Um, Our Stars.
Ooh, how come you picked this book to read?
Um, because I wanted to learn more about our solar system and our stars.
So tell me some things you learned.
Um, I learned that Venus looks like a star sometimes, but it's not really a star, it's a planet, the planet Venus.
Did anybody else have a cranky part of their body? Sake a peek.
Oh, the cat!
You did? What part of the cats?
The tail, and it just stuck up like a stick.
Why was the bone your favorite?
Because like, he acts all crazy, like he digs every single hole in the whole yard to find his bone.
Would your dog do that?
No.
No?
My dog is trained.
Well, one of the things we were looking for when we started looking at resources is really to find a program that was in keeping with our philosophy, which is framed around the literacy framework. There are many components to that, you probably saw in the video down in the lower left-hand corner, there was a little heading like interactive read aloud, reading mini lessons, shared reading, things like that. Those are all critical components of a really solid and robust reading program. And this program happens to contain all of that. And I'm excited about it, it definitely puts the teacher as the focus, it is not a computer-driven program. The philosophy behind this program is really about putting hands in the books of children and engaging students in, in not only teaching them fundamentals of, of reading, but also the love for reading. And it comes with hundreds and hundreds of titles of books, there are also online resources available to teachers. There's also data they can keep and maintain online for reviewing how the students are faring and keeping the track of their progress along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but this is our reading adoption recommendation for you to consider at this time.
Any questions?
No, no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion for the reading adoption recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burtron. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I do have one question. Will this start next school year then?
Actually, we're hoping, you know, I haven't heard this for a while, so we think that order will place quite, quite soon so that we can be comfortable to hand this to teachers as soon as we possibly can. Part of the program offers a lot of online materials for teachers and, of, very fast. So we're hoping to get things started so they can be prepared to start the school year come fall.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So we have, the next item is the approval to purchase the elementary literature, Mr. Tate.
So Diane and Chad brought this to me with great excitement, one-hundred-and-ten percent support from the teachers. And my job is to find a way to pay for it. So I asked Diane to bring the rep in so we could sit at the table because the price tag was too high. And I prefaced Diane and Chad, don't get scared when I push this person in the corner. Because I was going to push him in the corner. We got over a hundred thousand dollars reduced for nearly the same materials. And she came back and said, we are the only school that they offered three percent shipping to because I think they're afraid to lose our business. So with that, I felt very good about the poker hand that I played. My recommendation to the board is to purchase this series at a cost of five-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. It'll be paid for by the Curriculum Materials Fund, which formerly was called Book Rental. And a portion of that will be placed on the student book rental fees, which I'll present next. So my recommendation this time is to purchase these materials and get them ordered ASAP.
Do you want the board approval for that?
Get a motion for the approval of the purchase of the elementary literature?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
How long do we expect it to last?
Six-year program.
That's what I was going to ask.
We did follow what used to be the state adoption cycle, so there's a great amount, and there are new to be, so that's a six-year cycle of rotation, so that's typical for us.
And a lot of the books look like paperbacks.
Many of them are.
If they wear out, is there a replacement plan?
Well, they should, we should be okay with the way they're designed and how they're reviewed because you don't use it all at one time.
Okay.
You rotate it, you know, what students' money needs are. And there are many, many titles included in this. So I'm not real concerned about that, the fact that you're beginning with six. The fact that you're beginning a six-year cycle, many of those books will still be just fine. Many of them will be ready to be replaced. In fact, I've spoken to a lot of principals about cleaning out their existing book rooms in classroom libraries, making rid of some of the things that are worn out more so they can make space for the eternal that come.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
It was mine.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Tate, next item.
Yes, I bring to you now the recommendation for the elementary curriculum materials rental and fees. And I put in your background notes comparison from eight schools because I wanted to see where we were in the realm as far as 18, 19 book rentals. So you could see that I believe ours are very acceptable in comparison to the other schools. I also put in the current 18, 19 book rental for grades K through five and my recommendation for the 19, 20. So part of the increase for the 19, 20 is the literature adoption. Also, last year, our science adoption was totally paid for by a grant, so that was an increase of $5 per grade level also. So some grade levels experiencing $17, some are experiencing $9 increases this year. But we also went down last year because we didn't have science to pay for. So bringing this back up. Being very cognizant and appreciative of the cost to the parents and trying to pay for the materials that are needed, but at the same time paying our bills. Also, last year, we added the iPad, which again, we're only charging $40 for a year. There's schools charging $100 a year for their iPads. So I think as a board, you've been very responsible in this manner, trying to be respectful of the parents' expenses. So those are my recommendations at this time for the elementary grades K through five book rental.
Can I get a motion to approve the elementary curricular material rental and fees? Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And request to purchase a John Deere Compact Track Loader.
Yeah, in your background notes, you have competitive bids from five different companies. We're of course able to receive the government discount on these, also trading in one piece of existing equipment. So our lowest bid that we would like to award the contract to is Reynolds Farm Equipment, $28,950. Be paid from the operations fund.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of the John Deere Compact?
Charles, what will this mostly be used for?
Mowing, field work, sometimes we pull an aerator behind it.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Questions? This is replacing one, correct?
Yes, we're trading in one to replace it with this, yes.
I just, sorry, I'd just like to comment, I'm glad that we're using a local dealership.
The only thing I'd like to see is if there would have been a bid from Bain and Walker Equipment, they're in town too.
I'm not sure if they were asked or not, I can find that out.
Doesn't need to be.
Yeah, they might have been asked and not submitted, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
I'll find out for you, Mr. Tate.
More questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is, we have the second reading of the Lebanon Schools Police Policy Manual. This is ongoing, this is the second step of us going through this. We have to go through three readings. We vote on the final reading, which will be next month.
Correct. So it's the second reading again. Any questions? Chief Smith's available this evening and/or any contact you want to have with him between now and then. At the April meeting, we will vote to approve the policy as was submitted with any amendments or corrections that were requested, and it will become then the SRO policy from that point forward.
Mr. Smith, I do have one question, or Chief Smith. I did not see in there anything that addressed mental health. I could have missed it because it is about this thick. But if you could research that and get back with us, I think that's a big thing that really needs to be addressed in that policy handbook, so. Any other questions?
Okay. Action to amend conflict of interest disclosures. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Wiry. As brought to the board's attention earlier this evening during Science to Visitors, it was brought to our attention, myself, as well as members of the board and Mr. Franson, that the policies and procedures we had in place for addressing conflict of interest on items impacting board members was not in compliance with state law with regards to the procedures that we had in place. Mr. Newsom did contact a board member and then I think a recommendation contacted me. So back on February 6th, he reached out, we set up a meeting, he brought his concerns. Provided, I provided the documentation we had. Our procedure up to the point had been for any conflict of interest, the board member had signed the document that we were provided by the state, and then any vote that was had on that, the board member identified their potential conflict and then abstained from voting. And we had minutes to that. And so we had a good discussion. Chase again voiced his concerns, voiced his specifics. And at that point, since it was pretty obvious that the procedures we had been doing, that I had been following for the last 13 years, and in turn, to address one of his questions about how long, I responded in an email back to Chase, I think back, back on the 20th, that I was going to have Mr. Franson look into this. Because obviously, there was nothing here to hide, it was all the way it had been done in the past. Mr. Franson determined that for well over the last 30 years, the policies, the procedures of how we had handled this had been the same. So when I look back, that was over four superintendents, about 23 board members, and it's just not a conflict of interest that Mr. Newsom was concerned about with regards to insurance. We've had board members through that same three-plus decade period, well before I came to Lebanon, have dealt with issues regarding spousal hires, sibling hires, hiring of children in which they abstained, did not vote, but yet there was some potential financial gain from that move. We've also had a number of services and contracted services, going back early on to heating oil that was provided by a local contractor, insurance that was provided, snow removal services, construction removal services were just a few that have been addressed through this board, not this particular board, but over 30 years of board. And the policies and procedures to the best of Mr. Franson's determination and the best of my understanding during my tenure were being followed in accordance. Upon review, Mr. Franson determined that there were procedures, follow-up procedures that were not in compliance, and he took steps and actions. And Mr. Newsom and Mr. Franson had talked on a number of different occasions, and so Mr. Franson then informed the board. So what we have this evening, those are the procedures that we have. And so as a result, we have two board members that previously had completed conflict of interest paperwork. It had not been through the direction that you had been given, through past practice and procedure, had not been completed, and the paperwork had not been dealt with appropriately. Mr. Franson has dealt with you on that. So what we have this evening is a request for the board to reauthorize those potential conflicts and the paperwork that goes with them. I would ask though, Mr. Franson was not able to join us this evening, we do have a member or partner from his law firm, to address any of the legal concerns that were brought to this board through Audience to Visitors as to the legalities of board members serving in a capacity to provide services to the school corporation.
They can continue to provide the services so long as they make the disclosure, the disclosure is approved by the board, lest that board member can't vote on his own disclosure, obviously. And then the disclosure form is properly filed with the State Board of Accounts. So they can continue on, but the disclosure needs to be, needs to be made.
So once the disclosure is made, then according to Kent, there is no illegal?
No.
Component. Okay. So to that, that's part of where we're at this evening, to correct the oversights, unintentional for, as I said, a number of administrations, but yet nonetheless an oversight. And as I expressed to Chase earlier, I appreciate the fact, and I've said that in a couple emails, and he acknowledged that, appreciated that he brought this to our attention. Certainly, it's not the intent of this school board or any previous school board or any previous administration or clerical support to have any kind of non-transparent action with regard, so that's been 30-plus years. With regard to local purchase, it was always my understanding, so this is my 19th year in central office. I served six years as the Assistant Superintendent under Mr. Walker, and then the 13 years I've served as Superintendent. It has always been the intent, and one that I have fully supported, that we attempt to purchase locally. Whether we get the red tractors or the green tractors, we always try to get out there and get them to bid. Sometimes those services can't be provided, but we've always attempted to go out and provide those services, and that is apparently something that was going on back in the 60s and 70s as well. Back then, we were much smaller community, services were rendered here from local vendors that you couldn't go find somewhere else. So that's kind of the background from the legal standpoint, we've gone with that. Confirmation from Mr. Franson, who serves as our legal counsel, and his law firm has reviewed this. Mr. Franson has also informed me that he has contacted all state agencies that need to be contacted and shared with them the background circumstances, situations, and that as a result of that, I'm recommending, and he concurs, that from this point forward, in order to ensure we are in full compliance, that if any potential conflict of interest surfaces, that Mr. Franson be directly engaged and/or a representative of his firm and/or whoever represents the board as legal representation, put a final signature on this as a stamp of approval as a reviewing official, that we are in compliance with both state statute, the intent of the law, the letter of the law, and then we continue to move forward and do business in the best interest of this community and the students and the school corporation. So that's the history that I have. With regards to the question from Mr. Robbins with regards to the last bid, Mr. Tate can get that information, I believe it's two to three years ago, I'm not sure. The insurance business has changed dramatically in my tenure, and we've had service from local providers since then. I can share that I do believe without a question, we've gotten good service, but we've also gotten good premium reductions. And Mr. Tate also has the documentation, I believe he shared that with the board, and we'll be glad to provide that information as well. So to that effect, I would entertain any inter questions from the board as to the background, history, or reason that we're at this point this evening revoting on these two issues. Having said that, then, under the guidance of Mr. Franson, I would ask that at this time, we address first Mr. Wiry, who had indicated previously at the organization meeting that there was a conflict of interest with regards to a spousal employment. I believe you have the forms, or you have reviewed the forms that Mr. Franson and Mr. Wiry prepared in accordance with Indiana Code 35-44.1-1-4, in which Mr. Wiry fully disclosed in accordance with current state law and under the approval of Mr. Franson, not only his relationship to the conflict, but also his acknowledgement that the spousal hire could potentially have financial benefit to the family as well. Having said that, I would ask at this time for Mr. Wiry to abstain. I would then ask Vice President Bertrand to request a motion from the board to acknowledge the conflict has been presented, and then to a vote on the approval of that conflict form, so that then we can move forward and have this registered through Mr. Franson's office with the appropriate state agencies.
Make the motion to accept the amended conflict of interest disclosures, the ones indicating Mr. Wiry.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Before the vote, let the minister reflect that Mr. Wiry has abstained or will abstain from the vote.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and we'll make sure Mr. Franson has those documents to his office tomorrow, and those will be processed in accordance with state statute. Moving on to the second conflict of interest, again, in compliance with Indiana Code 35-44.1-1-4, Mr. Bertrand has submitted his paperwork with Mr. Franson's assistance and guidance to reflect his conflict of interest as well as compensation that would be received or could potentially be received, since this is a, not a state, not a standard payment, but it's based on however the insurance firms work, so there is no dollar amount specific can be stated, it's in general terms. The board again has received that document that was again provided to the board for your review after Mr. Franson's review. I would ask at this time, Mr. Wiry, as president, do you call for a motion, please, to consider the acceptance, acknowledge the conflict of interest that exists with Mr. Bertrand as submitted in the paperwork, and board's reflection and acknowledgement of that conflict of interest?
Need a motion for the acknowledgement of the conflict of interest for Mr. Bertrand?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Any questions?
Again, please let the minister reflect that Mr. Bertrand did not vote and abstained from the voting of the conflict of interest statement.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Anything else, sir, legal standpoint?
Nothing else.
Okay. Again, I will ensure that these documents are provided to Mr. Franson and submitted to the appropriate government agencies, both local and the county and both state. I do again want to acknowledge Mr. Newsom's engagement with me, which was basically inquiring and asking for information and bringing it to our attention. It was not aware of that, and so I appreciate Chase's engagement there. I know we didn't agree to agree, but it was always at a civil level and I appreciated that very much. So that's what I bring under those two agenda items this evening, Mr. Wiry. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Mr. Tate?
Bring before you this evening, recommendation of some trips. First of all, the Tiger Leadership Camp, which is an annual trip scheduled August 24th and 25th of 2019 to be held in Brown County. More details in your background notes. The next trip requesting board permission is the Spanish Overseas Trip to be scheduled tentatively June of 2021. Again, details in your background notes. And then the Middle School Band to Kings Island, which is ultimate annual trip, May 30th of 2019. Recommend board approval for all three trips, please.
Can I get a motion for the trips of LHS Tiger Leadership Camp, the LHS Spanish Overseas Trip in the future, and the LMS Band to Kings Island?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Lisa? Second, okay. Any questions?
These are nice trips. Thank you, Ms. Decker, for doing this.
And with the overseas trip, do we have travel protection if there's a?
I know in the past Holly's done a very good job, all the teachers have, of ensuring that there's some form of insurance available. We react basically to State Department initiatives. Sadly, during my tenure and even before as a teacher, the state of the world has changed dramatically. We don't want to limit our students and their opportunities. I've been very happy and so pleased with the work that Holly and a number of her colleagues have done in taking trips and provided opportunities to our students that they normally wouldn't have. Understanding though, that the status of the world has changed dramatically, and so we look to the State Department to guide us. That doesn't mean that there's not horrible incidents such as New Zealand that pop up, you have no idea. Does that limit a trip? No, but we look at that guidance that's provided as to the environment, the general environment. We look at the travel zones, the regions, but I can say without a question, Holly and under Mr. Rourke's assistance, work hard to find the insurance protection that's available to students to help recoup all or part of their financial commitment. It doesn't always work that way, but we work hard to get that.
It's obviously an expensive trip.
But we have now for probably the last 10 years, really deferred to State Department guidance on travel advisories, those types of things.
Do we have scholarships for any of these?
Holly's in the back, Holly, would you mind addressing that? Opportunities for student scholarship and/or fundraising?
We have, generally fundraisers, we are always looking for new ones, and we've become so saturated with various organizations and departments, things to manage, fundraising and everything, so it's difficult to find them. We have a certain line of places, a little one for two, less, there's brochure, everybody can be paid for it or otherwise. We have a line up of places, a little one for each of them, plus, here's brochure, everybody can, would be paid for a trip otherwise, by, you know, and we keep, there's some really more critical. Um, we have had, um, some of the authorities in town, the lights, um, funding for, uh, some of the extrusions, uh, additional costs. In the past, it's been, uh, that. What do we, to whom want to travel to be able to, uh, stay off the cost of it?
They're wonderful trips, our daughter went on them, that's eleven years ago, and she still talks about them.
My daughter's been on them.
Again, opportunities are provided. Uh, I'll go back to the course selection and the, and the pathways, uh, Mr. O'Rourke's eloquently discussed for such a long time. But nonetheless, those are things that we provide our students, that, that, uh, the CNA program that Ms. Scott is involved in. You know, those are, those are addressing current needs in the workforce, but yet we provide those opportunities that other schools don't. You extend that to travel opportunities, to, uh, even go back to, um, Tiger Leadership Camp, and how that allows students to, to, to absorb, uh, an environment where they're allowed to be leaders at, at a young age. Uh, I can tell you, whether they go to college, whether they go to the workforce, whether they go to the military, or whether they just become a family member in our community, those leadership opportunities, just like the travel opportunities, just like the opportunities for, for, uh. Work-based learning. All go to help make them. Individuals that are contributing, and they all benefit. So, uh, I think we all know I'm an advocate for European travel and for overseas experiences, without any question, I think it's invaluable. But it becomes more challenging, and I know, I know you got Holly back there. I know planning a trip like this is a whole lot more difficult than it was fifteen years ago. Uh, I hope you're shaking your head yes on that, because. Appreciate it. You know, even, real quickly, I know it's late night, but we talk about the European experience, but I, I think many of you know I went on that DC trip with the eighth graders. Some of the experiences those kids have are not anything like going to Europe, but they are once-in-a-lifetime experiences that will be talked about, be reflected upon, and be smiled about for decades to come. And once again, that's things we provide our school corporation.
And I always wondered who the old man was in the back of the bus with the white hair.
He was in the front of the bus, 'cause, 'cause the bathroom's in the back of the bus, and there're just some odors that mix with diesel fuel you don't want to deal with, but anyway.
On the trip.
That was a long answer to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. All those in favor signify, signify by, uh, saying nay, or, uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Other business. I want to give an update on our superintendent search. First of all, I want to just publicly say, um, thank you to all the board members, my fellow colleagues here. We've, we've spent countless hours, I, I, and, and that's our job, we're not complaining about that, but I just want to, um, publicly thank you guys for all the time that you guys have devoted to this, this, um, endeavor that we're going through. Um, it just shows your dedication, um, to our corporation and our community. We are getting, uh, closer, and we hope to have, um, an announcement after spring break. Is, is all of our intentions, if everything goes the way we're, you're planning, um, we should have an announcement after spring break. So I just wanted to, uh, bring you up to speed on that. And then other business is our regular, April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting here in the Herman B. Wells Room at seven PM, and does anybody else have any?
I do, I got two.
Okay.
We, um, approved an SRO officer tonight. He has already started, is that right?
Yes.
And so we've got a officer in every building again.
Yes, we have full complement of officers, as we had through our table of authorities at the start of the year. We have one in each building, we have Mr., uh, Officer Hendricks, who's supporting, supporting truancy at all schools, and then Chief Smith, who serves as administrative management and coordinator.
And then last but not least, I messed up last month, but stop-arm violations.
I believe, Mr. Chief Smith is ready to address that issue.
Actually, John's here, he's the one that takes care of the program, but, uh, we have a spike in the number. Uh, we have ninety-three violations that have been reported, um, due to either video issues or unable to identify the driver we decided thirty-four. Uh, there's a discrepancy between the two, and we need to clean up the process on how we do that. But, uh, ninety-three violations, thirty-four tickets issued.
It's the, the video, is it a camera issue, is it, I mean, what's, what's making that discrepancy?
It's the, uh, it's kind of an automated, a lot of times the violations we're having, first thing in the morning, it's dark, a camera won't, you know, the license plates as well. You might catch a couple digits, all started in a plate, and you have to have one of these two to go on. It's a lot of bright afternoon sun, the sun will be beating down on the place, and it'll reflect that. And unfortunately, our camera, uh, it's not like we're overseas, uh, CSI, uh, TV. And then the other part we have is, uh, multiple season on the register home, we've been called, husband and wife team. Uh, drivers are concentrating on themselves, they're fishing, and they did get a lot of the driving, and all this recently happened. And I have no idea, two people on the registration, if they're right over the hole bridge, we could just send it about. When we talk about a criminal crash, about blowing around the car, we have to, we, uh, we never do that, we have two people on the side. We started out with the attitude that, you know, the violation, the crew, it's like, uh, we were, you know, working out in court, the, the bus drivers are identifying male or female, whether, uh, corresponded with a registration. Very first case, we went into court, we lost because we couldn't make that determination of the bus driver and to the registration with a male or female driver, and, and, uh, we have to make sure that, if the registration is registered to a male driver, that the bus driver is identifying a male driver, and then also have to.
Okay.
How many successful tickets have been written and paid?
We have, uh, we had seven trials, uh, all of them, one had been guilty, we had thirteen that just went ahead and paid the fine, twelve that are pending, uh, in, in the court system now. Two of them, uh, there's two no trials, and they not paid, and I don't know if it's a point where the warrants are issued, but we have two nos.
Sure, I can't share that the Superintendent's Association and the, uh, School Board Association and the School Business Official Association have all testified at the legislature in favor of increasing the penalty to a loss of license for any conviction on a stop-arm violation. Obviously, that's not a direct result of Lebanon's efforts, it's sadly some of the issues that have happened around the state. But I would fully anticipate at the end of this legislative session, there's new laws that give these types of, of investigations more power, but also held the, the violators to a greater le- it's just not a fine, you'll lose your license just like a DWI. And that was adamantly supported by all three professional associations.
Needs to be.
And I think the fines went up to almost twenty thousand dollars in the new legislation, twenty thousand dollar fine plus loss of your license.
I would tell you, when Steve shares the numbers, I'm still amazed. I mean, I, I, you know, driving today around our community, you can see buses from blocks away. And our drivers do a good job of, they don't just pull up to the stop and slam on the brakes and turn the lights on, they slow down, they engage their lights, the arm comes out. There's a, a lot of advance notice, and I will give credit to Becky. Um, she works constantly on looking how to alter the routes and the pickup points. And that's another one, we do deal with, we deal with several state highways in our, our attendance, and so we have to look at that. But Becky continually is, is kind of analyzing. I know Speedway is one of the areas we worry about, 'cause although the pickup's on that side of the road, kids run over there and get a Slurpee or whatever, and then try to, you know, try to get back to the bus, and so, um, I'm very pleased with the efforts that are being made. I'm disappointed in the fact that we have to continue to make the efforts we're making. So.
Can we work with the city, like, if you got the, the hotspots, like, after, can we work with the city and say, hey, put a car out there?
I can let Chief address that, but I know there's been discussion with both city and county, putting officers on buses. Actually, kind of, not putting kids on buses, but putting police and then having other cars follow. So it's kind of a, I won't say trap, there's no entrapment on this issue, but kind of see what kind of response you get without putting kids in danger, and then them immediately moving towards that. And then Steve constantly is working, uh, all there's been a little change in the Lebanon Police Department, and, and, uh, Deputy Chief Bailey and, and Chief Smith are always in constant contact. So, it's, everybody's, uh, you know, yeah, let's do it, do it, do it, until somebody gets caught doing it, and it's like, well, my wife is driving, my cousin was driving, you know, my four dogs are driving, uh, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, but, um, we're making the best effort we can make.
Right.
And it's still not good enough until there are no stop-arm violations.
And it's gonna take another tragedy to.
Sadly.
Ramp up the.
David, you're absolutely right.
The awareness again's a sad thing.
Yeah. So, so, um, anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Spatter, are there pastries for those that toiled?
I'm right behind you.